Welcome to the outside, go in your trailer, check your extension cords.
All right.
It's crazy.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. We are a free, democratic, and just a good nation.
He's on a timed way.
Sometimes, phones do that sometimes, depending on the phone setup.
Now, we weren't normally going to have a public commentary, but Crystal's here, former counsel of the president. Do you want to talk to the chief now?
Is he there?
You're on, right, chief?
Yes, um, yeah, I'm not sure, because I got Crystal's email.
Okay.
Yeah, I would definitely call her now at the time.
Okay.
Okay.
She's going to call you down, all right?
That works fine, that's all I wanted, I tried to talk to him about this.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, the cooler is here.
Okay, so, moving on.
You have your meeting.
Thank you.
She did it out the door.
You do have various reports there, which we're not going to blow down unless anybody has a need or a question, can read them if you're pleased or fire please, Sammons. Okay? So then we move on to, you have Eric? You have a question? Okay. All right, so then we move on to a motion to approve, you need a motion to approve the March 2020 check register.
Let's wait, don't keep joining this thing.
Okay.
We'll pick, let's just go.
All right, we'll go back to the, go back to that. Should I just operate over that for now? Okay. Action items. First item on the list there is the approval of the water consultant Dennis M., yeah, Cal, no, Marjorie, yeah, like you said. So, you'll all see in there, in your packets, a copy of his agreement, which we've seen before. Fred brought this up after the water authority meeting, there were no major objections there.
I didn't put it in their packet, I emailed it to the clinic board.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we brought the subject.
It was emailed out, so, just to highlight it.
So, Fred, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the agreement he sends back in words, the way he's planning to look at things for the water company is in two phases. The first phase is the evaluation study, and it requires cooperation with the water authority, which he will have, in terms of access to the records, you know, all of their legal documents, all of our units, all of our contracts, all of our whatever, audits, accounting systems, whatever. So, that's part of it, he's going to take, study all that, he's going to evaluate, or evaluate the water company to see if the assets are properly evaluated. If he thinks they're undervalued, which he says is not unusual, because water companies tend to make major purchases and major improvements, and then try to depreciate them as quickly as the law allows, so they maximize revenge from that place, or auditors tend to depreciate them quickly, but many times they should be depreciated much more slowly over a longer period of time, because, for example, underground water lines have a life of like 100 years, and oftentimes they're depreciated valuable 20 years, whatever. He, I don't totally understand all that myself, but basically, he's going to look at all of that, he's going to come up with a dollar value for assets, and just, just check the overall operation, and then he's going to provide us with a confidential written report of everything he's found, at the end of the process, which will go to all members of the authority, and all members of the borough council here, for us to do with whatever we want to do. If we're going to go ahead with that, at that point, if we wanted to hire him for phase two, tonight we're only talking about phase one, which is the evaluation study. Phase two would be where he begins to negotiate, perhaps, or present us in negotiations with any bidders or suitors. So that would presume that after we do the evaluation study, he decides to give the water company a sale, in which case, he would, he would be available as a consultant through that process. For phase one, his hourly rate's $165 an hour, which Eric.
Well, that's a family discount.
Negotiate with him.
That's a family discount.
He should give us a family discount.
Normal rate's $200, but since he's related to Fred, we got the family discount.
So if you see, the proposal here talks about phase one being $165 an hour, it mentions that phase two's at $200 an hour. The rationale for that, he says, is if we actually do sell a water company, usually the normal practice is, if we employ experts or negotiators as part of the process, that that becomes part of also the sale price, in other words, as part of the sale, the reimbursement for those expenses. So, he's giving us the $165 rate. He estimated that the evaluation study would cost somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000. And it should take about three months.
John, do you have anything you want to add to that, or?
No, I thought the resume was, was fine, and we did meet him, and I thought his approach is, is logical, and if you want to keep going down this road, you definitely need to have an expert on hand like him, so I have absolutely no objection.
There was a committee made up of borough council people and authority people, who met, actually met, represented, interviewed him, talked to him, John was there, Keith was there, so, we drove him over the calls pretty good, beat him down on the price, looks like a pretty impressive resume, so. What we need now is the motion to employ him, to do the evaluation, the phase one evaluation at this point.
I will make second motion.
Second that motion.
Motion by Tom Bear, and second by Mr. Drummond. Do we have any further questions or comments?
I don't plan to abstain from this motion, I, if Eric keeps talking about family discount, I don't know whether I really consider this guy my relative or not. In full disclosure, I have told everybody that he is my, my daughter is his daughter-in-law, by marriage to his son.
It's a short tale, but good enough.
And that's how I knew about him, and knew what he did for a living, because of various events, we had to end as grandparents, mutual grandparents with the same grandchildren. You know, I've gotten to know him a little bit, but, you know, I consider him more an acquaintance than a relative, but whatever, I do know him, but I also respect his expertise in this area, which is why I brought Eric's attention. So, I don't feel uncomfortable voting on this, if anybody thinks I should abstain, then speak up now for a little piece, or, I don't plan to abstain.
After looking around, there's not a lot of guys that are specialists in this area, so, I don't, you know, there's no nepotism or anything like that, I wouldn't, actually not, but, I'll take the discount. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are you opposed or in favor of? Right, there's a little bit of delay. I'm sorry?
Oh, okay, I said aye.
He said aye, he's in.
Four. Four, okay, very good, there's just a little, there's just a little time delay there in the council force with the conference line, so, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. So hard.
It sometimes happens.
Yes.
And it doesn't help either using a voice.
Yeah, add it to the, add it to the delay.
Did you copy this ordinance out at all? The one that Zach sent out?
It's in our package.
It's in there?
Okay, Doug, would you like to explain this, since you're?
Yeah, I found this out later.
I wish Zach was on the line, but apparently he's not, right?
Zach, are you there?
Yep, I am.
Oh, you are?
Happy fact.
Okay. Then you can correct me if I misspeak here, but I'll tell everyone a little bit about it, did you say it's in the package or not?
Should be in the package.
Yeah, Redsville Borough Council, Zachary Nihos Solicitor. Date is April 6, 2020. It's the very last thing in the package.
It's all together.
It's all together. Okay, Zach's been working, Zach hasn't had a lot of time, he's had a listen, a brief time on this, but we talked to him about the possibility that we would transfer the borough's water, borough's assets to the municipal authority, municipal authority, but then be in a position to, to borrow the money and go ahead with the project on Helm Street, kind of take control of things. Our initial plan was to get an RUS loan from the federal government, and John, John, you can chime in here, because John's, every time I talk to John about it, he thinks we should probably abandon that process, that it has more baggage than, than benefit, and look at the possibility of private financing, so, you know, I don't know whether we're necessarily abandoning it tonight, but, we are, Jamie, who's a financial expert, is out there somewhere, getting bids, or getting information from private lenders about a possible loan, and loan rates right now are extremely good, so we're going to have to see what he comes up with before we decide, but, in the meantime, if we're going to go in that direction, we have to start the process of moving the assets from the borough to the water authority, and the water authority has to get, begin the process of ending its charter with approval of this council, to accept those assets and become our water sewer authority. And so, this ordinance was drafted to facilitate that process, and what, what we're hoping to do tonight, although we've got a couple of things in here we have to discuss, is get an approval from council to advertise it, because that's the first step in actually adopting it. Now, that's not adopting, just advertising it. And Zach, you gave me a timeline on that, that would fall into a timeline which would allow us to do what? Could you outline that timeline for, for everybody here? If we, if we advertise it tonight?
The ordinance has to be advertised a minimum of seven days in advance of a vote on it, and a maximum of 60 days in advance, so what I suggested is that if we advertised later this week, you could vote on it as early as your planning meeting, or as late as your June regular meeting, or anywhere in between, I think that's probably fairly ambitious, but, you know, I don't know, but, you couldn't wait until later in the month to give us more time on the back end if it does not appear that voting at the, at the planning meeting is appropriate. But, but that's the timeline, you have to advertise it at least seven days in advance, and you can't vote more than 60 days after it's advertised.
I don't know whether voting on it at the planning meeting is necessary, but it would be nice to have that option. I think at the planning meeting, assuming we have a semi-normal meeting or not, even if we don't, Jamie will be, at least by then be, be here and able to present us with some of the lending options, so he can take a realistic look at what the best direction we want to go with. That's why I'd like to advertise it. Now, there's a couple of loose ends in the ordinance, I saw that when I looked at it. On page three, you needed a date from CS Davis, and I see, right?
Well, and, and I'm not sure, this, this I think I have a tension.
Dive, dive. Go ahead.
This was adopted from the words of our firm, and CS Davis, the dead with Delta Borough, and in that case, and John, you can correct me if I have anything wrong here, you guys did a whole, first of all, the mapping of the assets. And, a plan that's referenced in the, in the ordinance. Yes. And, all that we've done here so far is the aerial measurements, right? I don't, I don't know what background we've gotten done, Zach, we do have a map, very similar to Delta that we are looking on for Whiteville, so we might have an exhibit that you can go with it. Yeah. And, and really, I think, it's, this would reference the, the aerial measurements that have been done, and the thought being, obviously, I think that, unless I'm mistaken, the authority would be implementing a fee structure similar to what we've discussed already, based on the previous measurements.
Correct. It would be very similar to Delta, in that the borough would be transferring all the stormwater assets to the authority, and we'd have to have a tabulation of those assets in that final ordinance. Somewhere we have to have a tabulation.
Right.
Then, yeah, that's what I think, yeah, and so that's what the reference is there on page three, and it's not done yet, which is why there is no date. But, there would be, you know, a description of the assets, and some sort of attachments, John would provide.
We need that before we can advertise it.
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think, you know, they talk about substantial changes happen to be re-advertised, I would not view the exhibit as a substantial change, it's really just a report of what's being transferred. The substance of it is not going to change by that attachment.
Correct. I would agree with that.
All right, then we could possibly get something plugged in there later after advertising, is what you're saying? Okay, I mean.
Yeah, I recommend it's going to be that, that be inserted before you take action on the ordinance, so I, I would doubt that you're going to have time to do it at your planning meeting, I'm guessing it would probably be at your May council meeting, or the planning commission in May.
Right.
Planning meeting in May.
So if we approve the advertising tonight, we can delay the advertising until at least a week before that, and we might, that's a risk.
Yes.
Okay. The second one is on page four, because the issue came up, of our contracts, that there was already signed with PENDOT, I mean, ideally, we'd like to transfer this thing over, reassign those contracts to the municipal authority, having the municipal authority borrow the money and then pay PENDOT, but apparently, I received information from John today that PENDOT doesn't think that's something we can do. John, you want to fill them out on that?
Yeah, I reached out to PENDOT to see if we could just transfer that agreement, the response back, that is probably more in Zach's area, PENDOT's position, at least at the project manager level, is that if we try to transfer that agreement, it basically nullifies the original agreement, which we don't want to do. So I think in the, in some, in some document, whether it's this ordinance or something else, the PENDOT agreement, the agreement between PENDOT and the borough, somehow has to be obligated by the authority to cover that, the payment of those fixed assets. So, the way I thought about it is, after I got that answer from PENDOT, is, that's, I think, another bullet or another plating in there, that the existing agreements with PENDOT become a part of the sale of the assets, at least to cover the, the payment, and we can attach the PENDOT agreement. Yeah, and in my view, that could be the consideration the authority pays for the assets. Okay, this is a key that, I think I'm just walking in here now, so, okay, you guys there?
That's good, we're talking about that.
Yeah, you owe them my money.
Yeah.
So, so, the reason I say, well, just, just, listen to this conversation, everyone's in the conversation, we'll finish it first, then we'll get to the key. So.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so, you have any one dollar, and you were proposing that perhaps we could put in the exact amount of obligation, but we don't, do we really know what the exact amount of that obligation is going to be? John, is what John, is, is John proposing that we just use the contract as an exhibit, whatever it is, it is, and that's what we have to pay?
I, I think so, oh, really, that's not a fixed price, that was the estimated price
Correct.
Before the construction, so, I think we just ought to tax the whole agreement.
And can we obligate ourselves to whatever the cost is? Without specifying the cost?
I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Can we, can we obligate ourselves in this, in the ordinance, like, it's just to whatever, to pay whatever that cost is, without specifying exactly what that cost is?
Yeah, well, in my opinion, we can, say that the, the authority is responsible at consideration for purchasing the assets, for whatever the ultimate contribution required from the borough and that being. And I don't think that's any different, I don't think that's a different obligation than the obligation the borough currently has. So, does the borough have the obligation and has borrowed, or is going to borrow a million dollars to pay it? All we're doing is transferring that whole transaction to the authority, it's just that we can't transfer the actual PENDOT agreement. We can transfer the obligation, at least that's the way I see it, then.
Yeah, and then the authority will be obligated to the borough, and PENDOT will be, you know, it's the borough's obligation to PENDOT, in fact, it's not that the authority is responsible to pay, almost like a co-signer.
All right, well, if that can be done, then I think we could advertise this ordinance right now. I mean, not right now, but after we get the additional information, plug it in, correct?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, seven days in advance of your May meeting, I think, I agree with John, it's probably a little overly optimistic to think that we'll be voting on it by the planning.
Yeah, in fact, the more I hear, we have some things we have to take care of municipal authority too, we have to amend the charter, to accept the responsibility for stormwater. That's, we're probably not going to have a meeting this week, so that's probably not going to happen until we have our May meeting also. But, but I talked to Peter Ruth about that, and he said, he told me that if we enacted that at the May meeting, it would be, and the borough that enacted it at their planning meeting in May, that it could be in place before the end of the month, because it would only take about a week to, to get it filed with the state bourbon and everything else again, or whatever, I don't know what the last steps are. So if, if everything came together, we'd probably be in a position where the charter will be amended and the ordinance could be passed at the June meeting. If, if we advertise this toward the end of the month, and possibly we could take action on it at the May planning meeting if, if there was an urgency to do that. Correct? Is that, I mean, is there, is there something wrong with that plan?
Not from my perspective.
It is important that we keep it moving.
Not just here.
Yeah, we have to keep it moving. We're already kind of getting behind the eight ball a little bit. When are we going to have to pay, pay PENDOT, John?
I'm sorry?
When are we going to have to start making payments to PENDOT on this, do you think, John?
Well, we technically are liable when they send us a bill, and they told us they were going to send us a bill at the end of the project, which continues to now float because of the COVID, so, I'm guessing it's probably going to be toward the end of the year.
I think we'll be all right. Well, I'm going to get to credit line payment. Well, yeah, we, I know that, but it, yeah, okay, but, I mean, we have, I mean, the authority has money from the previous loan, that we haven't spent on other things yet, we could actually advance some.
Correct, right, yes, it is, yes.
We could actually advance some of that money if we needed to, and then borrow the money later and recover it that way. We're going to have to borrow the money, there's, I'm not saying we could use that money for this, we can't, but we could possibly do that, because the money we borrowed from that bank in Connecticut or whatever was not dedicated money, it's not like grant money, you know, you got to spend it on a grant project and nothing else. Am I right about that, Keith? I think they explained that to me before. So if we ran into a.
Yeah, I was just, I was just borrowing with the capital projects.
Yeah, so if we ran into a crunch where we, we didn't quite have a loan accomplished in time to make PENDOT's payment, we could probably advance it and recover it when the whole is fully, fully through the process. So, if we could get, yeah, so I think, what I would like to do is advertise this, but not, not until towards the end of the month, so that we would have the 60 days would cover not only the May meeting, but the June, June planning meeting as well, which would be, I think, probably the latest date to be passed, and possibly as early as the June meeting to get it all, all done. Have you all had a chance to look at the ordinance? I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a great deal different from the previous one we discussed, it just doesn't have a fixed amount already established for the stormwater fee, but the amount for the project is the same, and the amount of financing is the same, we want to look at terms of the financing that's going to be from Jamie, but when we get it, we're figuring that the. It's got to be less than what we. It's probably, it's probably going to be very, pretty much the same, we figure 450 a month or something like that, somewhere around $4.50 or $5.00 a month just to cover this project, and, and that, that shouldn't change substantially in any way.
So.
Can I just ask a question here?
Yes.
On, on this Monday, when we, when we maybe not, not go through the RUS stuff, but now we're going with a bank loan or whatever, do we have to borrow that same amount of money? Or can we then have better figures on what this project's going to cost, and borrow just that amount? Because, Brad, that would have a very, that, that number that you're throwing around is basically based on that $1 million being borrowed.
Right.
If we don't borrow that amount, what do we, what do you guys think and are saying about that?
Well, this is John, the only thing, Keith, we don't have any, we don't have construction dollars, all we have so far is the same estimates that we used to borrow the million dollars, so we know the bulk of it's going to be PENDOT, and all we have from them is the estimate. We have three other projects that were included in that million dollar loan.
Correct.
That are ready to go out for bids if, if we can figure this virus thing out, and then we'll have those bids, but I wouldn't adjust that million dollars until we, in fact, I think what's going to happen, we're going to have to cut some projects that fit within the million.
Okay, all right, all right. That's, I'm, I'm going to say, I don't know that we're going to.
Yeah, but initially, the.
That's, I mean, if that's.
That would be.
That is the cost of what these projects are, I, I understand that, I was just, I keep forgetting about those other projects, John, that aren't just tied to Helm Street, you know, that's the, they have to keep forgetting, we have that Orange Street, we have.
We got Orange Street, Lime Hill Avenue, and the West Lawn, it was.
West Lawn, yeah, so, okay.
But this, this particular ordinance is only going to tie the cost of the Helm Street project to the authority, correct?
Right.
Because the other projects will be taken up by the municipal authority, because it will be the stormwater authority, and, and as they go out for bid, it will be the municipal authority putting them out for bid, and that'll come later. Correct? The red.
Well, that's an interesting twist, but I hadn't even thought about, the, the three other projects are included in the project because it's under the RUS loan, if we don't, if we do switch to conventional bank financing instead of RUS, we then theoretically could separate those three other projects.
I don't think so.
That's correct, and maybe, when we have them, and, and John, maybe other.
We have a better idea, John, than of these, the other projects that we were, the capital Eric thing that we were doing that secured that $3 million, there may be some money already existing on the authority side to pick up maybe some of those smaller projects on the stormwater, is that possible?
That's, that's possible, that's possible, I don't know, the $3 million that we borrowed, I don't know if it, was it as general as just capital projects or capital water projects?
Well, if you recall, the number, the number of the projects there, though, John, if I'm understanding or remembering correctly, we, we rounded, I think those numbers only came in at, was it 2.6 or something, and we rounded the borrowing up to the $3 million?
Yeah, I think that, I, I might be. Yeah, I think that, I, I might be extra in there.
That's, that's what I mean, I think there may be extra there, because I thought we borrowed more than what you had anticipated those projects to be.
Well, the, the point though, and somebody, I mean, you just brought that great point, if we don't go down the RUS path, we have a lot more flexibility in terms of how we do those other projects.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I think that's the part that I think we gotta pour heads together, and once we understand how much money is needed for these projects, and I know that that's a shot in the dark at this point here, but then I think we can leverage any further borrowing by the, perhaps the surplus we already have in the three million dollars in the authority. That's all that I'm thinking we ought to think through on.
That's definitely what we're looking at.
Yeah, so when Jamie comes back to us with his numbers, we'll have to decide whether we wanna borrow, how much we wanna borrow, above and above all the immediate expenses, if any. And we'll, we'll do the, but it'll be the authority that'll be doing that, because they're the ones that are gonna be taking the loan. Correct?
Yeah, I think the point, I think the point is, Fred, the authority could evaluate which projects they wanna do. We have to do Penda Hell of a Street project, but the other three could be done either now, they could be done using other funds, there's a lot more flexibility then if we, if we don't go down the RUS path.
Yeah, alright, if we get the stormwater fee in place before the end of the year, then that money's gonna start coming in, we could use some of that money to take away some of the other projects, particularly if we didn't just, you know, cut it to the bone. Um, but, you know-
Absolutely.
Cause we'll have a stream of income then come in, in addition to having to go out and borrow additional money. So, anyhow, um, anyway, uh, so, I think if, the attorney says that we can get this thing advertised before the end of the month with the information we have now, or with a little additional information that he needs, which he's going to get from John, so therefore, in the meantime, that's happening, I would make a motion that we advertise the stormwater ordinance, um, at a date to be determined by, by Zachary. Um, and the date should be such that it gets, it gets out there and is advertised in time for us, the, the six to eight period that goes, will cover us through the planning meeting in June. Is that clear, what I'm trying to say there? In other words, don't rush it out too quick, because I wanna make sure it's more toward the end of April, so we cover the meeting in June as well.
Right, and, uh, should it be out in time such that you could vote at the May, the regular May meeting if you wanted to?
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna be in a position to vote at the regular May meeting, by the, by the May planning meeting if we wanted to, yes.
Right, okay.
Alright.
Okay, so even if we advertise in early May-
Correct, yeah, that would be okay.
Okay.
In the meantime, I need to make sure the municipal authority has whatever flexibility it needs to amend charters and such.
Yeah, well that's, that shouldn't be any problem, I mean, you know, we just, I don't, I'll talk to all-
I know, but that's how we have lawyers, because there's never a problem.
Yeah, if they need a charter to accept it, doesn't mean we're going to, you know, we're not going to get it ultimately, the borough has to transfer it to us, it's just something we have to put in place to be ready in case it happens. And I, the majority of the board, the municipal authority members understand this is coming our way, and they're not objecting.
So we have a motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
The only thing I would have is, are we gonna have money for project management in this fee to make sure somebody's managing these assets correctly? That would be a question I have, just turning assets over and then, wherever your projects kinda just looming out there, that concerns me a little bit.
I was still thinking that the borough was gonna be in charge of managing the projects to some degree, because-
Well, John Clyde's was either a project engineer, he's the authority's engineer, probably gonna be-
I don't wanna end up with Hell of a Street, I don't wanna end up with that or have complaints.
We could certainly bring that up as a topic and figure out who's gonna manage them and how we're gonna be managing, uh, satisfaction concern.
Yeah, I mean, if nobody's gonna be there, then there needs to be, every project, we're paying somebody to be there, manage that from start to finish. That's, sorry.
I have to agree with my, well, I think I have to agree with my, so, just make that part of the deal.
Well, that, that's not currently how the ordinance is, basically the ordinance says all the assets go, and the authority is responsible for everything, so-
Managing, yeah.
If we wanna, you know, retain some sort of oversight or control, that's gonna require a little bit of adjustment to the-
And that goes back to my original question with the-
What's your job type?
With the MS four-
Roadmaster.
Where the MS four plays into play, who's gonna continue to follow up with inspections, reporting, you know, if we're handing everything over, who's doing that?
Yeah, we don't wanna get dinged for any of that, so, we still need somebody to do those things. I think we, I think-
Do you want to write it into the ordinance?
Well, it needs to be discussed.
Do you have a rural roadmaster?
I think, I think with the consent and management or something to that effect, that our Howard lawyer said that the rural roadmaster has to approve whoever the rural roadmaster may be, unless he might get annoyed.
Yeah, if you buy John's, I don't think he's certain.
Yeah.
He might want to fire him.
Okay, I, I propose that we work on that, think about that, and I get you some language to consider at the planning meeting.
Correct.
Um, and that will still give us plenty of time to advertise, um, by early May.
Okay, yeah, Eric said therefore, let's, let's take this, vote on this tonight, until then, cause I want to be going on what we're going to advertise. Yeah?
Okay.
Merchant table. Uh, next item on the list, the continuation of the disaster declaration, so that we may get any potential federal funds, state funds that may come up. In the fact that we have a continuation of that.
Are we gonna leave the engineer in there? Ready for any of them?
Yes.
Cause they're, they're on their clock.
And I believe Chief Paul had already dropped off.
John, John works chief. How's your job? Get that, get that ten dollar an hour rate, right?
They're on their clock, and they're also home, and they're making families, so I need to-
I don't see anything else here, we're gonna need Keith, because we gotta do some stuff.
Yeah, we gotta do Keith's financial reports yet, but, John, Zach, feel free to stay or if you'd like to leave, just, you can exit now.
On the day one, the law-
Okay, that's fine, just letting you know. Okay, so, we need a motion to continue the declaration of disaster, disaster declaration.
The motion to continue on with the disaster declaration-
Till April thirtieth, April thirtieth of the year.
Till April thirtieth then.
Well, what's, what's our meeting in May?
That's what I was just gonna look at.
May fourth, of course.
So this continues through May fifth. Okay, Mr. Brown, the motion maker.
That's fine, I'm just still looking back.
Re- stack in, Mr. Secantis. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Fourth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. We're still having a disaster. Okay, that's Keith. Keith, you wanna do your, bounce back to your check register there, if you wanna make any comments?
Sure. Uh, really, you know, as far to, when you guys look at this month's statement, and also what we, where we are for the three quarters of the year, it's really hard when we look at the comparisons to say that we're, we're gonna be facing some issues here with this virus stuff and everything, you know, the cash accounts, the total, those cash accounts, as you can see, and I gave you those comparisons, that's where we were last year at this time, and you can see that we are, we have increased, uh, there's an increase there, as well as, uh, Tammy today, we received more money from Randy, uh, to the tune of, I think it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars, that is not reflected yet on this, you know, in our cash account, uh, for this month. So, that's the good news, you know, the first quarter is the good news. Uh, so, what you're seeing there too, is even, uh, it's kind of, it was kind of good that this was a rather light month on the expenses, I mean, there was a lot of bills paid, but as you can see, there was none of these horrific things that came due, all that kind of stuff. So, we're at this point here, at the end of March, I, I like the cash position that we're in, uh, but I, I'm happy with that, with some other comments that I, I found out today, I've got some updates from YO TV on projections, and they are not good. So, Eric, I don't wanna get ahead of myself here, but in front of you then, is the, is the check registers with the bills that were paid, and again, connected to that is the, uh, just a summary of the cash accounts and how much we have in each one of those accounts. So, um, you know, if you have any questions, with the register itself, I can try to take care of that now.
So the one time I don't, the one time I don't ask if we have any money, we have money, is that what you're saying?
On, on March the thirty first, Eric, we were good, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, so-
Anybody have any questions on the check register entries for Keith? See, we're paying Brown too much.
I will tell you how the township provided their bill today, so.
Is that like ninety, is that like ninety thousand or something?
Ninety-two, did you hear that?
Yeah, we just, we just wiped out the tax payment there, Keith, though, with that township, though.
Uh, not even off, Jamie told me that would soon be here, so yep, low behold, so there it is, yep. But hey, we got money to pay it, Eric.
Right, good job.
Jamie, I guess this is-
Ninety thousand something.
Three twenty-seven, twenty twenty, the animal contract.
Was that for calls, that they provided service?
Where are you at?
Uh, this says page two, Redsville Borough, Register one oh five is Operational Checking M and T. This is three twenty-seven, twenty twenty, it's number one four eight one zero, for the animal contract. Was that, so they provided some type of service?
Yes.
Sure was a big one.
I can send you their bill.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I believe it was on Front Street.
Yeah.
I'll send, I can send it out.
That's fine, just, I'd like to see what we're getting billed for.
You, you asked me if we-
I know, I did.
Yeah, I sent it.
Did you send out?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Not the one I was questioning, no.
Oh, well then I'll send it out, please.
I'm saying, is that, is not the one I was questioning?
I don't think so.
Milk repair service, is that one of your problems?
Yeah, it's a red light on, or not the red light, school lights on Third Street. It was budgeted for, it was approved, the work was performed, uh, it looks like it was paid, but he sent another invoice today.
Okay, who says?
Milch repair.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, he does, uh, all the red light maintenance for us.
Good.
That, that we don't have to do with in certain, let's say, like the green light go, that we had to bid out a different, cause it was over a certain amount.
I don't know if we're paying CS Davidson a lot of money here.
Yeah, I'm doing it. I haven't had Keith up, I, you should have Keith up there for you now.
Keith, you wanna, you wanna update us?
Let's approve, yeah, tell them to make a motion about doing the financial reports first, both, both.
Yeah, this, uh-
Wait a second.
Yeah, I can-
Wait, wait, just wait a second.
What we're okay with, Keith?
We're gonna get through the, we're gonna get through the approval first, then we'll talk about that.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion to approve this financial, check register and financial report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, any further questions or comments on the reports? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, go ahead, Keith.
Okay, I can run there.
I'm sorry?
What the, who's second?
Larry. Larry did.
Okay, okay, now, so, okay, Larry?
Yep, go ahead, yep, go ahead, Keith.
Okay, um, and just, just to bring everybody up to speed here, and John, are you still there? Yeah, okay, yeah, just to bring everybody up to speed, you know, John has been giving us heads up on, on his report every month about some outstanding invoices for those different projects that CS Davidson has, has been doing for us. Uh, finally pulled out all, everybody's heads together that needed pulled together, and we, we have paid, uh, we have paid, I'm gonna say the cost of those, but we have traced down where some of these issues were, I think even right now as we speak, at the week, and, and the check is actually in the mail from Kansas County National Bank, covering all of the outstanding invoices for the stormwater projects.
Check is in the mail, John.
Check is in the mail, John, check is in the mail. So, and we have, actually, we, we passed about eighty-two thousand and some change for that, we still have, if you remember, the gentleman approved the, the extension of that credit line last month, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With this eighty-some thousand we borrowed, we still have maybe around eight thousand left in that credit line, okay? But all of those invoices that have been outstanding, uh, are being paid. Now, we move over to two issues then on some grant monies, uh, the one, the one we finally found out after getting, Tammy getting some other people involved in Ben and such, that the ball was dropped not with us, not with Davidson, not with Ben, but somewhere that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars advanced was actually applied for, uh, and I'm understanding it was approved, and Ben sent all that paperwork into those people, and they, I believe, and John, you can maybe help on this, but at this point, they can't tell us why that wasn't processed, and I think now we are, uh, being told that that will be as processed as quickly as possible, and that a hundred and fifty thousand will be advanced to us on that, that project cost. When we get that money, uh, I think there is around twenty, there's around twenty-one thousand dollars that is due and payable then to CS Davidson, so as soon as that grant money hits, we will be paying those invoices in full. Uh, the other one that remains is the one that we received seventy-one thousand dollars on, uh, back last year, made in the year in December, so we released like fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand to Davidson. We're short yet on the grants being received of about twelve thousand dollars, that's, that is, uh, CS Davidson outstanding invoices yet on that project cost, uh, and I guess that's the part we have to talk about, when is the next time we can make application for any more money from that? And if we can't, until, you know, how we get sometimes, we have to have the payments made and all that, then I believe we need to be in a position to pay off those invoices of CS Davidson and apply for some kind of, uh, you know, grant funding then that way. But I'm, I'm really glad we're, go ahead, John, first, first of all, I appreciate all the work that everybody did to figure all that out and get, get us paid. The, the ball was dropped by DCNR, and yes, I, I don't get why I never did here, uh, but they were the ones that didn't front that money. Now, I just wanted to answer your question about how often you can apply. As soon as you use up the money they already gave you, you can apply. So, for instance, if, once we get past seventy-one thousand dollars on the, the one that you got, after done using up the money, you can send, as soon as I send you an invoice, you can send it up to them. Well, I can apply, at the time you have a defense. Yeah, cause we, we have, we have, we have spent the entire seventy-one thousand, okay? That was, that was, that was, uh, all went to CS Davidson, and so we can, with those outstanding invoices, then, John, you're telling us we could submit those invoices for reimbursement, or do, do we need to pay you first and then submit? So I think, I, I'm willing to, let you send the bill out there and I'll get paid, but I'm just concerned that the seventy-one thousand dollars you spent was all on that project. Well, I guess you'll have to look at those, I mean, we tried to, you know, pay them, it was that, it was the largest part of that was like the fifty-six or- It was that, it was the largest part of that was like the fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand we paid you at the beginning of December. That was right after we had received that money. Okay, we can track down all the invoices. I have my kind of department putting together all the invoices and marking by which ones are paid and which ones are still outstanding. But that's a part of the line. And when DCNR sends you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, same thing there. Once you use up that hundred and fifty, as soon as you get the next bill, which will probably be construction, not engineering. Correct. If you get the bill from the contractor, you send it up to them. Gotcha. That's, that's fine with us. So you're, you're saying to us that we may not have to advance the funds like we did on the first time with this project to get reimbursed? We can actually send the invoice up after we exceed it, what we've already received? I think they told us they'll turn it around in two to four weeks and any, any contractor will tolerate a thirty-day payment. Gotcha. Okay, all right. Well then, I think the only thing we have to do is make sure, because I have connected with that project, the cost there, I have the divert has already laid out like seventy-four thousand and some change against that seventy-one thousand that we received. So we do have some money that has come out of general fund for that project that was not fully covered in that seventy-one thousand dollar check. And I think we still owe you like around twelve thousand. Well, I think you and I can get together what invoices that you paid to make sure that was all invoices related to that project. Gotcha. Okay. We can do that anytime. But again, I appreciate all the work that everybody did to get us paid. Yes, I was just, we're sitting here, literally, literally, we are waiting for the check, John. So we'll make sure that you get that when we do. But I believe, I think Tammy was told it was actually mailed out this morning, so, uh, from ACMB. So, okay.
Well, we knew, we knew you needed the money there, John, because you're gonna be trapped in your house for a while, so. Want to make sure you have TP.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, two KF on the ground.
Try.
All right. So Eric, is that, are we okay with that thing? Eric, I'd like to discuss something else here very quickly. But are you okay with the Davidson's?
I'm good with that. I was involved the whole way along, so I'm good. Anybody else still?
The only, and this, this, this I just want to give you guys an update on and just a heads up. Uh, this, today, I don't know if any of you have a councilman received it or not, but just today, I got correspondence from YATV concerning our earned income tax. I don't know if any of the other people have seen that. But, uh, they are telling us, uh, two things are going to be happening here, okay? You know, with all these delays now in payments, uh, you know, usually in the month of May was a very high collection for the earned income tax because that April fifteenth was the due date of everybody's tax return, which is now July. Because that was also the first quarter's estimated payments, which is now shoved to July. And, uh, it was the first quarter remittance of all the employers on April the thirtieth for what they withheld. They're, they're telling us, or in this letter, if you haven't seen it, we need to be prepared for those numbers to be, uh, in a range of ten to thirty percent less, uh, especially for any collections that we're going to be seeing in June and July. Uh, the other part of that is the delay of money that usually ends up coming in here to us in May because everybody paying their taxes in April, is probably, we're probably not going to see that till later in the year. Uh, the other issue is they're telling us to be prepared for, uh, delinquencies that probably individuals and employers are not going to be able to put some of these payments in a timely manner. So some of those, you know, it's like, it's a tax guy, it's not going to go away. We are going to receive it, but due to the economic state, people aren't working, and so it's going to be less. And we are going to have a timing issue. Now, when I, the other areas of the budget that I have concern with is, uh, the, like, the taxes that are all based on economic type factors. Real estate taxes are not going to be an issue. There might be a delay, there may be less people paying with this, and what have you, but you know, that will always be paid at some point. I'm, I'm concerned about the, uh, the transfer taxes, the real estate transfer taxes. You know, with real estate being shut down too. This one's a check typically we get, uh, in the range of, I'm gonna say between three and four thousand. This one's here, we got eleven hundred bucks. So I'm not anticipating even in the next couple of months to, to be that great of a, of a significant, uh, you know, cash influx from that area. I do have my concerns. I am looking at the budget. I will only be making suggestions as to areas that we could look at for cost stuff, but you guys already know that we run a very lean, very lean, uh, expenses category. I mean, what is in that budget is what we needed to operate. I am somewhat relieved, I had already made adjustments to reduce anticipated taxes coming from the earned income tax. So even if I have to reduce that up to twenty percent or more, I'm looking at that cost, that number may only be twenty-five to thirty thousand, even if that, because I've already reduced it going into this year. Uh, so I, I think we're gonna be, you know, a little bit cashed on those issues. But I'm hoping, you know, the impact can be also managed. So that's, that's Eric, that's all I want to tell you for now. Uh, we do have to look at it. We will probably have to be readjusting and amending the budget to reflect some of these changes.
So.
Yeah, I mean, that, that EIT money is, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get later. It's not money you can make up for. People, people aren't taxed on wages they don't, they don't receive. They're not gonna receive additional wages later, so. Um, it's money that's just not going to be there at the end of the year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there not, is there not gonna be money in the COVID for local governments to cover things like that?
There isn't now. You heard the governor of New York complaining about that in his news conference last week. The states are in the same boat. They rely, they're earning the tax much more than we do, even. Because we rely primarily on the real estate tax. They rely on their own income tax to, you know, that's, that's, that is what their budget is. And there's no money in the COVID, uh, whatever they call stimulus bills to help the states or the, uh, the local government plus earned income tax. It's just loss, that's it. And it's not gonna be made up later.
We're planning on two more, at least one, maybe two more.
Yeah, there may be something in those, we can hope, but there's nothing right now.
Okay, so that's, like I say, Eric, that's just a heads up there. The stuff that I am looking at and monitor. Uh, I was very, I was very glad that YATV came out with that letter today. That was very helpful. Uh, they had also indicated that during the first three months of the year, it looks like they were going to be going for a record tax collection this year. That's how high the numbers were. And they have been drastically shut down, so, uh, it was a good lot of appreciate it. And they said they would continue to keep us updated on any specific trends that they speak on.
Well, looks like you fired Ron. Can't afford you anymore. You had a fire, we could fire Keith. We put you, we put you on the same face scale with John, ten bucks an hour.
There you go, yeah, that's ten bucks a day, yeah, gross, yep, yep, yep. But that's all I have, Eric.
Anybody else have any questions? For John?
Keith? No. You know, while John's on there, we didn't really have to ask for an engineer's report, but is there anything on the engineer's report, John, that he wants to tell us about? And only if it's necessary, because we want to really wrap this thing up and get out of here correctly.
Okay.
Maybe John didn't hear me.
John, are you leaving?
No, I'm here.
Okay, did you have anything you want to...
Sorry, just a minute.
Did you have anything you want to...
No, no. Yeah, I don't have anything else. You have my engineering report, there really doesn't actuate it in there. The only thing I'd say is construction is gonna be all screwed up now, both in terms of bidding and construction. Uh, so I came and tell you what I think's gonna happen. So whether we bid the wood front part, stuff this month like we anticipated, and whether we get the Home Street project moving, I don't know. Doesn't look good for at least the next month.
How's the bathroom price going?
We had to say.
Do you find cheaper bathrooms?
Yeah. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, so let's see. That's the man, the Mr. Mayor, you know you're crossed out, but, you know, because you've just been sitting there with nothing to say the whole time. Feel bad for you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the thought. Pass on is, uh, I found out from Chief Mollitt, yesterday we had a, uh, an OD death in the borough. Two hundred block of, uh, Orange Street.
Thought that was one hundred block.
Well, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. A one hundred block, I was asking about the two hundred block.
What street? What street is that?
Orange.
Orange, okay.
That's all I have on that one.
Eric, what do you got going on over there in your screen?
Yeah, where'd you say that was?
One hundred block.
One hundred block.
That is what an overdose.
Yeah.
Couple ounces up behind you.
I seen the action, but I don't feel it's my business to go ask.
Feel free.
I, I figured, I figured the proper people were taking care of it.
All right. Um, anybody else have anything else?
So that's...
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the March second regular meeting minutes. We have a motion?
I saw.
We have a second? All in the favor?
I think you need a few corrections in there, I believe. Mr. Slipes asked members of council who is responsible to maintain the Civil War markers at the corner of Hyblis Street, and it should not be Hyblis, it should be, uh...
Cherry.
Should be, I want to say how it should be worded in there. It should be west of Seventh Street and Cherry Street intersection, at the end of the Cherry Street right away.
Hyblis and Cherry?
Yeah, it should be worded, that Hyblis shouldn't be in there.
Just say the end of the Cherry Street.
End of Cherry.
Yeah.
Okay.
West end, I guess.
Yeah, it'd be west of, west end of Cherry Street, right away. That's all I had that I picked out.
Yeah, that's good. Everybody okay with admitting your motion accordingly?
Yes.
All in the favor? All right, posed? Okay, and then we have the motion for to approve the March sixteenth payments. Motion made.
Second.
Other questions, comments, all in the favor?
Aye.
Um, anybody have anything else I have?
If Rick can hear me, have you heard back from Donsko on Mrs. Geezy's complaint?
Rick? Even here.
Rick?
Repeat.
What's that? No, Rick.
Hang on a second.
Have you heard back from anybody at Donsko on Mrs. Geezy's complaint?
Rick, Mike's asking you a question, Rick.
I can't hear him. I can hear him talking, but it's echoing.
Okay. Have you heard back from Donsko on Mrs. Geezy's complaint, from anybody down there?
No, um, I talked to Mrs. Geezy and Don the man, and called her, that's all I know.
Okay.
Other than that, uh, um, she hadn't, her, she had told him, she had not heard from, what's that other guy's name?
Chris Buck, and that's what she told me earlier today. And so I just wanted to follow up with that.
No.
Okay.
I have not heard anything. Hey, I haven't been out of house for three weeks, so.
That's fine, I just, I ran into her today and she was asking about it, to bring it up, so I figured I'd ask.
Yep, no, and I have not heard anything from anybody other than she had told me that, uh, the man had called her, but she ain't going to, what all went on, with the buck, that, uh, bucket. He had called her and she called, or man had given a surprise. And I think she ran into another guy that's in charge of something, I don't know what his name was. But that's all I know.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I want to publicly thank Sue for, Sue from Sue's Market for being there for the public. She even, even occasionally has toilet paper in stock. Plus, she's also providing an area for municipal authority bill payment drop-off, so she's gone above and beyond for the community. And to remind everybody that...
That she has for many, many years.
Yes, that she has for many, many years. Actually, actually, I noticed on my Facebook timeline that her anniversary is right now, since time of the month. So she's having an anniversary that's not really much of an anniversary sale because of what's going on. So congratulations on another year, Sue. And the, uh, to remind everybody that the Legion is still offering service for shut-ins and people that need something done. There's a number to call, seven one seven, two five two, three four one two. And they will be distributing meals again this Saturday from eleven to one. And I heard tell that there might be a bloody bunny there, but you never can tell, you know? That's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Two quick things.
Go ahead.
Complaint Department, two oh two, two oh four, Harlem Street. I directed codes to continue to follow up on that, because the dumpster was still overflowing. So we will see a bill for that, so everybody understands. Part of the code administrator's bill is gonna be the enforcement on that property. Uh, the other thing is for the parks, and I know that we discussed already previously some people planting memorial trees in the commons. Of the COVID, there was two families that contacted me that could not have funerals, and some relatives of the family had asked if they could plant memorial trees in the park. I told them, I don't see an issue with it, we just have to figure out where. So if anybody is opposed to memorial trees in the park, please tell me different now.
You're talking about trees that are gonna be in our plan, trees?
These would just be trees that get planted, and they would have a little plaque, planted in memory of.
Can we work it into our plan?
And that's the thing why I said, we, I don't see an issue with it, but we need to figure out with the future construction where they can be put.
Yeah.
And I just want to make you all aware of that. So when I get back to them, it's all, everybody's aware of why them trees are there in the plaques.
I think probably should be, we get to pick the tree, they get to pay for it. I know, it's close to done selecting to pick a tree. Just so they understand.
That's what I'm saying, it has to be within the plan laid out for our, our development there. We don't want another ditch.
No, we're not gonna end up with ditches.
What do you say there, Mr. Story? You can off the quiet?
Uh, I want to point out that sort of assistance is concerned. Uh, people can call the Eastern York Food Pantry, if you're in Eastern York, at, uh, two five two, two six oh nine, Monday through Wednesday before noon. You call before noon, you will get food, groceries, whatever we have available that day. So, yeah, we got hit pretty hard, but, uh, we're in good shape. Just, just call before noon on Monday through Wednesday, and we'll take care of that day.
All right, I'll have those numbers in the comments of the video for people. Let me put this up. Anybody else have anything? I would entertain a motion for...
Yeah, something just occurred to me, um, just, just so we're aware of it, before we close here, just, just popped into my head. We deferred to vote on advertising the ordinance, and because we've done that now, that kind of necessitates we'll have to have a planning meeting this month. You know? Yeah, just, I mean, you know, and which is gonna be difficult, it would be another meeting like this meeting, so. Right now, I don't know if there'd be any other action items at that, it'd be a planning meeting other than this, but this would necessitate having to do that, so. Uh, maybe we ought to just vote and, and give, authorize the advertising, the ordinance, contingent on the additional information being included in, uh, before it's advertised.
I don't have a problem with that.
That way, if we, if we, if nothing else comes up, we don't have to have a planning meeting. But, uh, it would probably be a good thing, because this, this whole shutdown isn't gonna be over before the end of the month anyway, so.
Chris, I mean, we could advert, you could, you could take action at the May, regular council meeting in May, and still have an advertising time for the May planning.
Oh, we could?
Yeah, we only have to be advertised seven days in May.
Okay, all right, then let's, let's wait.
We'll advertise in May fourth.
Let's wait and see what the amendment looks like before we vote on it, okay, very good, thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead, go ahead. Voting for the chairman, if someone.
I moved you adjourned.
Yes, chairman.
All in favor?
You're down, you will go down or up, sir?
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Rick, my thanks, Rick.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. You guys, you guys all get paid. To you, Rick.
Yep.
To you, Rick. You're welcome, Rick.